Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna start here. We're gonna start by taking a call from Mr. Hatton. Agenda review session Wednesday, April 6, 2016. We have ordinances on second reading. 606 as amended by 606-1. In order to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3, Point 28, Reschedule. Scheduling Section 3428, 120, Parks and Recreation Fees. Amend Recreation Permit Fees. 607 Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13, Point 08. Sewer Service System, Section 13, Point 08, 340. Schedule A, Schedule of Charges. 601 Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, Ten, Ten Dot 16, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 10, Dot 16, Dot 050, Schedule 29, Time Limit Parking, Somerset Street. 602 Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, Dot 16, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 10, Dot 16, Dot 210, Schedule 38, Time Limit Parking Areas, Somerset Street. 603 Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, Dot 20, Handicap Parking, Section 10, Dot 20, Dash 010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, 85, Seven, Seven, Luffberry Avenue, 207 Howard Street, 29 Lewis Street, 177 Lawrence Street, 317 Sanford Street, Apartment 2. 604 Orders to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. Resolutions. 601 Approve Agenda Amendments. 602 Approve Payrolls, 3516 to 31816, 31916 to 4116. 603 Authorize Refund for Redeemed Tax Sales Certificates. 604 Approve Request for Use of City Property and Street Closing. Request by New Brunswick Cultural Center, Location Boyd Park in Varick Streets, for Cinco de Mayo Celebration Parade Saturday, May 7, 2016, Street Closure time 12:30 p.m. to 1 p.m., Street Closure, Mar Street, Nielsen Street, and Commercial Avenue. Park Closure 1 p.m. to 6 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 605 Approve Request for Street Closing, Requested by Rutgers Robert Wood Johnson Medical School. Location is Livingston Avenue between New and George Streets. In 2016, Rutgers Robert Wood Johnson Medical School Convocation being held at the State Theater. The date is Monday, May 16, 2016, time is 8 p.m. to 10 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 606 Approve Request for Use of City Property, Request by New Brunswick High School. Location, Bugle Park Pavilion for First Annual New Brunswick High School Tour 5K Race. The date is Saturday, May 21, 2016. The rain date is Saturday, May 28, 2016. Time is 7:30 to 1 p.m. 607 Approve Amendment Resolution R. 031647, Reason to Pay Additional Legal Fees in the amount of $10,498.87 to the Department Law Firm, LLC, for Special Counsel City of New Brunswick against Marvack Construction Corporation, $49,675.66 to $60,174.53. 608 Approve Request for Use of City Property, Requested by Pentecostal Council Church of God for Religious Event, War Memorial Park, Saturday, May 28, 2016, to 18, 2016. Location, Georgetown Park. Date, Saturday, July 30, 2016, to August 13, 2016. Location, Feaster Park. The date is Saturday, September 10, 2016. The time is 4 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. 609 Approve Request for Use of City Property, Requested by New Brunswick Tomorrow. Location, Georgetown Park. Family Wellness Fair, Saturday, June 4, 2016. Rain Day is Saturday, June 11, 2016. Time is 10:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. 610 Approve Emergency Temporary Appropriations for 2016. 611 Approve Request for Street Closing, Requested by Vulcan Pioneers of New Brunswick. Location, Parade Route, George Street, Reps. Avenue, Sanford Street, Pine Street. Street Closing, Pine Street for Parade and Gowning and Celebrating Juneteenth. Dates, Saturday, June 18, 2016. Rain Day, Saturday, June 26, 2016. Raid Time, 11 a.m. to 12 p.m. Time is 11 a.m. to 4 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 612 Approve Renewal of Contract for the Dial and Ride Program for 2016 with Stanley Jersey Department of Human Services. Term is January 1, 2016, to December 31, 2016. Amount is $56,315. 613 Approve Request for Use of City Property, Requested by Tempo Benay Shalom. Location, Bugle Park Track for Third Annual 5K Walk-in in memory of Camper Cool. Date is Sunday, August 28, 2016. Time is 8 a.m. to 12 p.m. 614 Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 041545, Reason to Pay Final Legal Fees in the amount of $6,045.50 to Lawrence, Peter, and Esquire. Sergeant John Quip in the matter of Isaiah Jordan versus John Quip, $5,000 to $11,045.50. 615 Approve Request for Use of City Property, Requested by Rutgers University Center for Global Advancement and International Affairs. Location, Bugle Park Pavilion in adjacent Lawn area. Student Picnic given by International Student Organization of Rutgers University. The date is Monday, August 29, 2016. The time is 4 p.m. to 8 p.m. 616 Approve Request for Street Closing, Requested by Rutgers Department of Major Events and Programs. Location is College Avenue between Senior Street and Bishop Place, Morale Street, between College Avenue and Site Card Street, and Bartlett Street, between College Avenue 7 and Site Card Street. The Rutgers University Involvement Fair. Date, Monday, September 5, 2016. Rain Day, Friday, September 9, 2016. Time is 8 a.m. to 8 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 617 Approve Request for Use of City Property, Requested by Rutgers 11:00, Chapter of Kappa Alpha Pi Fraternity Incorporated. Location, Bugle Park Pavilion for 11:00 5K Run and 1 Mile Walk. Date is Saturday, September 24, 2016. Time is 7 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. 618 Authorize Renewal of Inter local Service Contract Agreement with New York County Department of Public Safety Health for Public Health Services and Programs. Term is January 1, 2016, December 31, 2016. The amount is $236,848.52. 619 Approve Amendment Resolution R. 021657, Pay Additional Legal Fees in the amount of $1,001,1350 to Benedict and Arthur for Police Director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Victor Rodriguez for the City of New Brunswick, from $18,538.50 to $19,652. 620 Authorize Application Acceptance and Execution of Grant Agreement for 2016, New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety, for 2016, Ticket for Ticket Seatbelt Campaign Reforse to Grant. The amount is $4,000. 621 Authorize Relocation Lean for Amount Expended to Relocate Tenants. Location, 44 Pennington Road, Block 714, Lot 6. The amount is $6,210. 622 Approve Request for Use of City Sidewalk, Requested by Enocenta Sumano. Location, Somerset Street, Oxford Street, French Street, George Kilmer Avenue, Bowling Street, for Livingston Avenue for Religious Walking Celebration to Honor the Virgin Mary. The date is Friday, April 15, 2016. Time is 4 p.m. to 5 p.m. 623 Approve Request for Use of City Sidewalk, Requested by Hope's Door Foundation. Location, George Street between New and Albany Streets. Raise Awareness for Internally Displaced People in Nigeria Due to Boko Haram Attacks. Date, Saturday, April 16, 2016. Time, 9 a.m. to 11 a.m. 624 Authorization for Assignment and Assumption of Financial Agreement from George Street Redevelopment Urban Renewal Associates, LLC, to Rutgers University, State University of New Jersey, 335 George Street, Unit 1. 625 Approve Request for Use of City Sidewalk, Requested by Community Baptist Church of Somerset. Sidewalk in Front of Train Station for Distribution of Religious Literature and Clothing to the Needing Homeless. Date is Saturday, April 2, 2016. The rain date is Saturday, May 7, 2016. Time, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m., not broken up. 26 Approve Request for Use of City Property, Requested by Muslim Center of Millicent County. Location is War Memorial Monument Park, Jersey Avenue, French Street, for Distribution of Non-Territorial Food to the Community. The date is Saturday, April 16, 2016. The rain day is Saturday, April 23, 2016. The time is 12 a.m. to 3 p.m. 627 Approve Authorization to Advertise for Lease of a Portion of Property Known as Block 597.04, Lot 4.0. Home News Row Water Tank, specification number 418, Dash 16P. 628 Approve Amendment Resolution R. 091530, Reason to Pay Additional Amount of $3,027.50 for Installation Charges for the Police Department for Rising Business Network Services Incorporated, not to exceed $3,027.50. Pro will this amendment will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 629 Approve Award of Contract with Rutgers State University Municipal Public Access Plan and Coastal Volunvoluntary Assessment Report, not to exceed $25,000. 630 Approve Award of Contract to O'Connor Davies, LLP, for Forensic and County Expert Litigation Advisory Service, City of New Brunswick versus Marvack Construction Corporation, not to exceed $35,000. 631 Approve Award of Contract with Kay and Radahan Enterprises Incorporated for Legal Services and Water Utility, Water Street Bank, Membrade Building, not to exceed $8,082.58 for Millicent County Cooperative Parts Purchasing Program, CK 12, Bill Set from Kay and Radahan Enterprises Incorporated. 632 Approve Request for Use of City Property, Requested by Josephine Elaine Corretis. The location is Boyd Park for Earth Day Sustainability Festival with a Ceremonial Tree Planting. The date is Saturday, April 23, 2016. The rain day is Sunday, April 24, 2016. Time is 10 a.m. to 4 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 633 Authorize Tax Letting Transfer Overpaid and Certified Tax and Utility Tax. 634 Authorized Purchase by the Police Department of State Contract, A, 81348, from Radigan Associates Incorporated for Two Bulletproof vests for the Police Department, not to exceed $1,005,1250. 635 Approve Award of Contracts and Rejection of Bid. Furs and Delivered Trees for the Spring Tree Plant Incorporated for the Parks of Long with Barbado Nursery Incorporated, Items BFGIJKM, not to exceed $15,202, with Schittsels Nursery Incorporated, Items ACDEHL, not to exceed $7,086. Specification Number 516, Dash 16P. 636 Approve Authorization to Advertise for 2016 Furs and Deliver Regularly Signed, specification Number 902, Dash 16. 637 City of New Brunswick 2016 Municipal Budget Introduction Wednesday, April 6, 2016, Public hearing, May 4, 2016. 638 Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 121, 5A. Reason Supplemental Funding for Engineering Consulting Services in the amount of $15,000 to CME Associates for the City of New Brunswick for some Marvack Construction Corporation, Reps. Avenue, various Storm Storm, approved from $15,000 to $30,000. 639 Approve Resolution of R. 061429, Reason to Pay Supplemental Funding for Engineering Services in the amount of $80,500 to Hatch Mott and Donald Holden, Incorporated, through businesses Highfond and Donald, LLC, for Copper Dam Repairers at the DNR Canal from $79,800 to $98,300. 640 Held to Requesting the Engineer. 641 Approve Realization of City Noise Orders, Requested by New Prince Concrete Construction Company Incorporated. Reason to Install Pretty Crosswalks at the Intersection of Nielsen Street, Commercial Avenue Intersection, in Connection with the Millicent County Bike Way Project. The date is Saturday, April 9, 2016. Ultimately, date Saturday, April 16 to 23, 2016. Time is 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. 642 New Brunswick City Market 2016 Budget Introduction, Wednesday, April 6, 2016, Public hearing, May 4, 2016. 643 Approve Cancellation of Special Emergency Appropriation in the amount of $400,000. 644 Approve Resolution Authorizing Issuance of Special Emergency Notes. No way it was discussed by Castle, that's it. Clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar is absent. Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Garladi?
Present.
Council President Egan?
Here. Please be advised that the Notice Requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act has been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed under appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey. It has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Review. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we'll have a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces and for all our men and women in our armed forces who've lost their lives in battle. We have minutes for February 17, 2016. Do you have an approval for the minutes?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have ordinances on second reading. 606 as amended by 606-1. Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.28, Fee Schedule, 3.28, 1.20, Parks and Recreation Fees. Amend Recreation Permit Fees. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the council. As you know, my name is Charlie Cradaville. I'm from New Brunswick, and I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. I wanted to ask about this ordinance. I got some information about the logic behind it. Can you just, for the public, say why these fees need to be changed? Is this, you know, what was the motivation?
Mr. Lock, I have no time.
I'm sorry?
That's why I have something to give you.
Well, the only change you're acting on tonight is a change in the time. There was an error in the ordinance that was about to be adopted at the last meeting. That error had a three-hour maximum per applicant in the ordinance. This is amending it to four hours. But prior to that, the Recreation Department and the Parks Department made a recommendation on increasing the fees to cover their costs. We have people working overtime assignments, and obviously, at night, we have the lights on at certain athletic fields, but it was simply to cover their expenses. Thank you. And so, from my understanding, some of the fees are the same as they were before, but others have increased. Are there any that are decreasing, or no? I don't believe any are decreasing. Okay. And is there an estimated amount of additional revenue that the new fees will bring into the budget?
Can we estimate that amount of permit fees being, I mean, is that something?
Suppose we could estimate it based on last year's activity, but I have not done that yet. Okay. And can you tell me why four-hour minimum, or I'm sorry, four-hour maximum, the change to Memorial Stadium?
Well, I believe, I spoke to Mr. Locklin. We have, that field is brand-new, and we have a, we're only allowed a certain amount of hours on the field for a warranty, so I think we can only limit the hour usage on the field. Mr. Locklin might say that?
That is true, as it pertains to Memorial Stadium, yes. There's a number, there's a, there is a number of hours that you should not exceed, or else you avoid the warranty. And having just invested a million eight in that facility, that's the last thing we'd want to do. But maybe Ed Spencer, if he'd like to speak to why he believes a four-hour maximum at other locations is important?
Yeah, it confirms exactly what you just said, by Locklin, the fact that we would exceed, if we exceed the time usage on that field, we will lose the warranty on that field. And the issue is that we want to retain that warranty so it's on loop. That's the importance of it. It's, we pretty much went in sync with all the other municipalities that have their fields, so we want to be able to hold that field as long as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you. This is interesting information. So, can I get some details about the warranty? How many years does the warranty last? I don't have that document, but I'm sure we can find it. And I should, I might have confused people. This is the only location that has a maximum to it. I misspoke earlier.
Yeah, this is the only location that has a maximum. We don't have that information. We can get it for you about the field, you know, about the new field, but that's the gist of the time limitations on the Memorial Stadium.
Okay. And can I get a number, how many hours is the, you know, are you allowed under the warranty before you exceed?
I don't think we have that paperwork with us. Yes, can somebody answer us? Please stand?
Yes, we do. The warranty is 3,000 hours of regular use.
3,000 hours per what time?
Year.
Per year?
Yes.
Okay. And so, it's the, it's the city's estimate that having a four-hour maximum would be necessary to keep, keep under the 3,000 a year? Okay, thank you. This is interesting. Can you, I guess, has the city gotten any feedback from people who use the field about this maximum?
Well, they, they should be here tonight if they wanted to have some feedback. Tonight's the night.
Well, certainly, tonight's a public hearing, but, you know, for folks who can't make it, they might put comments in writing, or...
Hold on, Mr. Lock.
We did have a meeting with the three soccer leagues that use our fields, the city, and they've all been in agreement with the...
Yes, there was a meeting with the three soccer leagues that use the field, and they've all been agreement. So, there was a meeting.
Okay, so, and so, they, they...
They were notified that they had, yes, the answer to your question is yes.
Okay. And, yes, that is all I have on this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on this particular ordinance?
Seen none?
None.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes. 607 Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13, Point 08, Sewer Service System, Section 13, Point 08, Point 340, Schedule A, Schedule of Charges. Would anybody from the city, anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? On this particular ordinance? Yes, perhaps?
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. Forgive me, I have not had a chance to review the ordinance. Can you tell me what the changes are? Is it going to be an increase in rates? Increase in rates by 6%. 6% effective immediately? Effective May 1st, when the ordinance takes effect is, I believe, the earliest date to write the new fees or the new rates into the bills. Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, were the fees not, the rates not revisited within the past 18 months? I think last New Year's, New Year's 2015, the rates were increased 5% per year, and those increases were every year for the next three years. This would be year two of that. Is that correct? That is correct. And so, is this on top of that? So, this year, the rate payers in New Brunswick are going to experience an 11% increase? That is correct. And what is the logic behind changing that at this point, mid-year, in the middle of this? To cover expenses that we have projected for the utility that are greater than last year's expenses. We have an MCUA overcharge from 2015 of $366,000, which has to be paid in 2016. They've given us an estimate for our 2016 activity at an increase of $193,000. Our debt service is going up $319,000 this year, and we've collected $175,000 less last year than anticipated. That's against $12 million worth of revenue. When you add all those things up, a new $1 million has to be raised to cover the expenses of the utility in 2016. Okay, so, this additional 6%, does that add up to an additional $1 million in revenue? It gets close to it, yes. Okay. And forgive me, I don't understand the relationship between the MCUA and the city. Who is in charge of our sewer system? Is it the city government or this agency? The city manages its own sewer system. It sends its sewage to the MCUA for treatment. We could bill for that.
They treat our sewers.
I see, and that's, that's in Sayerville, right, I think?
Correct.
Okay. And so, I hear an overcharge from the MCUA of $366,000. Can you tell me, please, what is an overcharge and how does that happen? That seems like a pretty big trouble. Our sewage is measured in volume. It's measured for some other biological factors, and we pay them an estimated payment by quarter, and then, at the end of the year, they true up. And our flow was not the problem, but some of the biological factors that I was speaking of were particularly suspended solids. That all added up to a $366,000 overcharge.
But in previous years, we've gotten money back or didn't get overcharged?
No, we've gotten money back in previous years when our estimate versus actual was in our favor.
So, sometimes the pendulum swings our way, some this year, this year did not. We had over, over, overweight, we were over-tunished.
I got you. Okay, so, that's, that's interesting. Is there anything the city can do? Was there anything that changed within the past year about how these estimates are calculated? Or is this just a normal, you know, to be off by 366 is just a normal deviation? It's in the, it's in the realm of normal. We have had a series of positive years where we, in fact, got refunds in the following year. That was not the case this year. I've asked the city engineer's office to try to evaluate and assess why that happened, but, again, it's not volume or flow in the system. The system is vulnerable to rain events where water seeps into the system in weak areas, but that, that was not the problem this year. Okay. And I guess the last question, I want to know, is there an estimate for what the impact on the average household and the average rate payer? How much this additional 6% will impact them? We can calculate that. I do not have that at the moment, but you can assume that the bill will go up for sewage only, not water, will go up a blend of 11%, at least for the, for May through the end of the year. If you, if an average family of four is billed $100 a quarter for, for sewage, it would be essentially $111 a quarter beyond May 1st. Thank you. Okay, I guess, just one more question. Is there anything the city can do to counteract some of these rising costs? I mean, the overcharge is just a, you know, I guess it, you know, comes with the territory, but like the debt service and other things, is there a plan to, you know, try to limit these factors so that rate payers don't get another rate hike next year? Well, the debt service is a function of the things we're trying to do. We're replacing, we're trying to assess what is called INI, which is infiltration and inflow, again, where rain events leach into the sanitary sewer system. We've been studying that for a while. We've separated lines downtown, which were once combined, stormwater and sanitary. You've had people come here before you complaining about sewage problems in their basement. Out on Wilcox Road, where the lines were flat, the debt service is a function of the capital improvements we're trying to make to the system. It's, I guess, in that sense, it's a double-edged sword. The more you invest in the system, the more, you know, at least the debt service is going to increase. And again, this just happens to be a bad year. We've had a number of positive years where we've gotten substantial refunds from the MCUA. Thank you for this thorough answer. I promise. Last question is, who is in charge of the sewer system within the city? Is it the Water Utilities? Is it the Engineer's Office? Is it the Administrator's Office? Or is it some kind of combination? I just want to know who to ask questions to, you know, outside of the street, and who handles the, this whole system?
I believe it's the engineer.
The city engineer with assistance from Public Works as it relates to cleaning catch basins and dealing with certain, we have a vehicle that DPW owns, it's a jetback. It'll break up a clog in the system, but the sewer system is managed by the city engineer. Thank you. Okay. Really, the last question, is the city engineer here tonight? The new one? A new, a new city engineer is here tonight.
Yes.
Can I just, can you just raise his hand so I can look at this? Welcome aboard. Thank you very much.
Anybody else on that particular ordinance? Seen none?
None.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember, member Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. That ordinance is on first reading. 601 Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, Point 16, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 10, Point 16, Point 050, Schedule 29, Time Limit Parking, Somerset Street.
Remove the ordinance setting down April 20th for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Same.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 602 Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, Point 16, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Chapter 10, Point 16, To 10, Schedule 38, Time Limit Parking here in Somerset Street.
Remove the ordinance setting down April 20th for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Same.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 603, Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.20, Handicap Parking, Section 10.20.010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, 85, 7 Luffbury Avenue, 207 Howard Street, 29 Lewis Street, 177 Lawrence Street, 317 Sanford Street, Parking 2.
Move the ordinance setting down April 20th for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 604, Orders to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cash bank.
Move the ordinance setting down April 20th for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have resolutions. We have Resolutions 601 to 644, only 640. Would anybody from the public have to speak on any of the particular resolutions? Anybody from the public? Step right up. Anybody else from the public?
Good evening once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. First one I wanted to ask about is 614. This is a matter involving Sergeant Quick. I asked about Sergeant Quick at the last meeting. I'd like to know, has anybody looked into whether or not he was, you know, his assignment was changed due to concerns about his credibility?
Mr. Council President, I could comment on the resolution. I don't know particularly about Sergeant Quick.
Can we get right to the, yeah, the comment of the resolution, please?
The resolution merely provides authorization to pay Mr. Bitterman his final bill in the matter of Jordan versus Quick, and that case has been dismissed in the final bill that was submitted. As is appropriate in other cases, we're keeping authorization to pay Mr. Bitterman.
Was this a federal case or county case or what type of case was it?
I believe it was a federal district court, but there's so many of them, don't quote me on it.
Okay, and so I guess the allegations against Sergeant Quick are something that police are not concerned about or?
Proved to not be valid as far as the allegations against he and other defendants and the plaintiff elected to dismiss the complaint.
Okay, and can you please ask Captain Miller if Sergeant Quick was transferred or removed from the anti-crime unit after this case?
Mr. Cradaville, let's stick to the resolutions, okay? We can talk about that on the public comment, but if you have a question about the legal bill that was paid here, that's what we're speaking about. So let's get to that, please.
Sure, I'll be on. 24, what does this mean? The assignment assumption of the financial agreement with?
What's that, 24, sir?
I think that's just a, yeah, I can answer that, Mr. Council President. That deals with a condo unit, if you will, over at 335 George Street, which I believe is called Liberty Plaza at the time it was developed. The occupant of that particular unit used to be UMDNJ as a result of the merger, if you will, with Rutgers. Rutgers now becomes owner of that particular property. There is an agreement, a financial agreement in place from the prior owner development, George Street redevelopment, which now is going to be assigned with all of the provisions intact to the new owner, which will be Rutgers, and that authorization which is sought allows the financial agreement to be transferred to developers, to anybody.
Thank you.
Okay, so this was described as a condo unit? Is it, it's not residential, it's an office, right?
Office space, yeah, down at George Street, University Medicine Dennis Street, used to rent the office space. Now it's Rutgers Medical School, so we're just switching the names around.
Okay, and I guess the city is also party to the agreement, is that how it works?
City is party to the financial agreement.
Yes.
Okay, and so just trying to understand the nature of the financial agreement. Why is there a financial agreement? Do they pay for maintenance of the building or some type? Is that what it's for?
It was a payment through a tax.
Okay, and do you know all family mail, the annual payments?
I don't, well, it's off my head. I can tell you there's 12 years left on the agreement. It was a 30-year agreement, so for another 12 years, Rutgers will have to be...
We don't have the answer for that, but you have to spread a little bit.
Got you, okay. All right, last page. Is there a time frame on when the bike lane is going to be done, the bike lane project?
Mr. Cradaville?
That's the county's project. They have not informed us when that's going to be done. In some of the conversations I've had with them, they were expressing that probably sometime later in the spring or summer, but I think they have some issues with the contractor and some of the details that have to be redone on a couple of corners and doing some more of the striping, so. I don't know if there's a whole lot of work yet to be done, but they haven't, they just gave my office a final date on that.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville.
Thank you. Next up is the city market budget. I just want to confirm that that budget includes an increase in the rates of, is it 2.5% for all the categories?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And is there any update on whether the entities that pay pilot payments are going to start chipping in to the city market? We just discussed that Rutgers is in fact now paying a pilot within the city market and as we discussed at the last meeting, the parking authority does so as well. Has there, has anybody looked into that? Is there any update? I think that should be considered before the budget is adopted.
Mr. Lachlan?
The matter is being looked into. There has not been a conclusion to it. We've discussed the comment that Mr. Cradaville raised at the last meeting with the mayor. Glenn Patterson, TK, Shammy are looking at it, but we have not concluded anything yet.
Okay, and then I'm not sure if the last two are related, but I'd like to ask you about them. What is the cancellation of the special emergency appropriation? I guess this is related to the revow?
Yes, we did a $1.2 million emergency appropriation to fund the revow. I believe we've let out a total of $800,000 worth of contract to cause that to happen, so the finance officer has asked that the balance of $400,000 be canceled.
Okay, so the city is getting a better than expected deal on the contractor?
Certainly, the price came in less than we originally established.
Put more, put money back in the bank, pretty much.
Great, and then the next one is authorizing the issuance of special emergency notes? Can you explain the purpose of this?
It's related to the revow. If you don't mind, I'm going to ask Mr. Peddix to speak to it.
Sure, Mr. Peddix?
Sure, thank you, Council President. Now that we do have a final number, not the million two, but the 800,000 that we talked about, I'm asking for authorization to go out and be able to finance the 800,000 over a five-year period.
Okay, sounds reasonable. The last thing I wanted to talk about is just make a point about some of the great items on this agenda. I know that I often complain that the council doesn't give updates on things that are going on as frequently as I would like to see and, you know, often the resolutions are not addressed at all unless someone, usually me, gets up and asks about them. But I see some great events here and I just wanted to say that I think it's awesome. There's going to be a Cinco de Mayo celebration on, I guess, May 7th parade. There's going to be a first annual New Brunswick High School Zebra 5K race on the May 21st. That's, it sounds like an awesome event. There's going to be a bunch of religious events in different parks over the summer. I also see a family wellness fair on June 4th. Put Together by New Brunswick tomorrow. I see Vulcan Pioneers of New Brunswick are doing a parade on June 18th for, to celebrate Juneteenth. And I also see Temple is doing a 5K walkathon in memory of someone who passed. I see a number of other great events and I think these are examples of things that the council should highlight at the meetings without somebody else bringing them up, but to talk about the various things that the city is approving and why they're approving them and why, you know, the decisions are being made. So I would, you know, in the future, I'd love to hear more updates from the council before you pass the resolutions and ordinances. It would also serve as just a great way of promoting these events and letting people know that there's free events, fun events in the hub city. So thank you and I hope you consider that suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Anybody else like to comment on the resolutions of the city? Anybody on the resolutions? Seen it done? Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Yes, standing on 624 and 629.
624, 629, so noted. Council President Egan?
Yes. We'll now move to the public portion of the meeting. If anybody would like to address the city council, step up, you have five minutes, name and address. Anybody like to address the city council?
Good evening. My name is Teresa Viva. I live in New Brunswick in Prosperity Street. I came here in the name of parents that are concerned about the last situation that occurred that many of you know on the safety of schools. I just want to give you pass of, I want to give you the list of requests that we give to the board school, to the board education already, but I want you to know about what we're doing to continue helping the schools to be more secure. And I hope... The council noticed that there is families, parents, mothers, fathers, media members that are concerned about how the situation has been handled by the schools. We are not happy, so that's why we're asking the board to consider this list of requests and petitions. And I hope you can hear some of my family members that came today to hear, to say as well about this. I know some people might say this is not something that we should put here, but I think it's important. It's important for the board to know that we have people in the schools that we are not happy about and I want you to notice that it's important, your suggestions about how we can work together to make sure that the schools are better for children.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address this? Anyone else like to address the council this evening? Anyone else?
Buenas noches. Buenas noches. Soy la madre de Oscar de Aparicio, el hijo que fue atacado brutalmente en la escuela.
Hi, I'm the mother, I'm the mother of the child that has been attacked at the school, at the high school.
Y traemos esta petición para tratar de mejorar la escuela. Es una petición, espero que la tomen en cuenta. Que este queremos, queremos que si pueden que capaciten al personal de seguridad a que pueda lidiar en esta situación con los jóvenes.
We want you to, to read these petitions and we hope you can help us also to make sure that the director of security do their job, protecting the children.
Como también pedimos que el joven, el joven que atacó, el joven agresor no regrese más al distrito escolar por el bienestar de los demás estudiantes, más sin embargo, él necesita ayuda para que comprenda que la violencia no es la mejor manera de resolver los problemas contra otra persona.
One of the petitions that we're asking is that the child that attacked or son not to come back to the, to the school, but also we're asking for help of this child because we know he needs help.
Gracias.
Anybody else like to address the council this evening?
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Quiero que hagamos algo muy importante. Tenemos muy claro la comunidad hispana que la educación viene de casa.
We are very conscious that the education starts at the house.
Por eso mismo venimos a representar a nuestros hijos. Para estos niños que uno nos inculca los valores de respetar a los demás, queremos que la seguridad de la escuela sea muy estricta para defender a nuestros hijos.
Because we know that, we want you to know that we are doing our best to teach our children how to be safe and how to care about the people, but also we know that we need more help in that area.
Y ustedes tienen un papel de un párrafo muy importante que recomienda programas culturales para que estos niños tengan cosas mejores en que enfocarse y no en la violencia.
And we know that you are part of this. It's very important that you open more spaces for cultural events, exercise events, more things for children to do at the school because I think that's important.
Yo creo que cada uno de ustedes tiene que ser un hijo. Ahora imagínense si esta situación le pasó a un niño con todos sus sentidos, ¿qué puede esperar un niño con mis capacidades en las escuelas?
So I'm very sure, I'm very sure that one of you guys have kids. And imagine if this happens to a child that has some whole functions, primary functions. Imagine those children that are with difficulties or learning disabilities.
Por eso mismo vengo aquí a pedirles que tomen en cuenta estas sugerencias y también nosotros como padres queremos trabajar, bueno, al menos unos cuantos. Yo creo que estamos aquí, estamos al pendiente con los maestros y con las escuelas de nuestros hijos. Por eso mismo queremos que nos tomen en cuenta para ver cómo podemos solucionar todos esos problemas y que sea New Brunswick sea una, que tenga una educación mucho mejor.
We know that this is only about one group in particular. This isn't working together, all of us. We need to help to make sure that our children receive the best education in New Brunswick. We also want you to know that we are here, parents are willing to cooperate with you to make our schools better, New Brunswick better.
Esperemos ver resultados. Que nos ayuden ustedes para llegar a una solución entre el distrito escolar y ustedes y los padres de familia. Muchas gracias por su tiempo.
We hope, we come with you to make sure that the board education and the city council and parents work together to find solutions to the problems our children are confronting. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I would just like to talk about the safety in schools. I would like to talk about the safety in schools and how they, what they should have. In the video of the fight, you could see a security guard just standing there watching the fight and not doing the jobs.
One issue that we have going on in schools is that the students who are getting bullied report the incidents to school officials and they are not telling the students what the punishment of the other student is, is given to a student. One of the issues is that the school officials do not pay attention to what a student is saying. Some of the officials of the school are part of the bullying. They will sometimes say things to students they're not supposed to and sometimes they could get physical with them. And I personally have experienced the victim of that physical things that security guards have done, not just to me, but to many other students at the school.
So the security guard gives you our time at the school, is that what you say?
Yes, not just security officials, but the teachers.
I'm saying that we should not tolerate bullying or any fights or any violence in the schools because we are not going to be here to stand in the way for a student to get like, to die or something to start making progress, if you want it. We want to do it right now because you never know what might happen. Some of you might have kids and you wouldn't want this to happen to one of your kids to get like hurt just because the security didn't do nothing and they're supposed to be doing their jobs.
Thank you.
President.
Yes, Mr. President.
If I may, definitely any bullying that is ever done needs to be reported. Somebody in the school that you can count on. But don't take the discipline records of students to be made public. That would be against the law. So they can't necessarily always tell you the actions. But definitely make sure that you see people, whether it's a guidance counselor, whether it's a teacher you can trust, somebody in the school, whether it's the janitor or somebody. Please make sure you count somebody and also tell your parents.
How are we supposed to trust them when they're part of the issue?
No, you trust somebody in the building. There's got to be somebody that you feel comfortable with in the building, whether it's security, teacher. There's got to be somebody that you feel comfortable with. One teacher, somebody like that. Make sure you tell them to.
Some of us don't speak up because we're shy or we have any issues. Students, they don't, they might not get beat up at school or get assaulted, but they self-harm. And the last thing we want is someone physically getting hurt and dying or somebody committing suicide.
Certainly, you know, one violent act is not good enough. But find somebody, whether it's in the community, some people out here, city, somebody to make sure that you tell them, alright? Find somebody. Don't just keep it to yourself.
Alright, I part as a community expect changes in the school board. And we hope that you can take this seriously before something bad happens in one of our schools.
Okay, thank you.
So this is the, this is why in the list of petitions, this is the only children that complained about the issue. And we are worried about it, you know? This is what happens and the schools in the news about how the situation was handled and where the security director was at the moment of the incident. All the situations, this is years and years. He didn't complain, that's what Last American Union was involved because we don't know how to handle this without the support of the board education, without the support of the city council, without the people that you said, you said. Somebody come and go to somebody that you trust, somebody that you think that might help you. That's why we are here. Because I think you represent us, because I think your voice is important, because I think you're leaders. But this is important. The children are out there, they need to support somebody. That's what we asking and one of the points is that we demand a fair and transparent reporting system of all comments and complaints regarding bullying and violence in the school district. As well as conduct of teachers, administration, security personnel, whether they be in the public police officers or school security guards because we also hear complaints about the police being at the school. And I'm not saying children, I'm saying people outside. And any other school district employee or student in addition to the state measures concerning harassment, intimidation and bullying, the HIB law that as opposed in 2014 we are supposed to have in all schools. And we willing, as mothers have said, and fathers and children and students that you noticed, willing to cooperate with whoever is willing to implement it. So we can create a system where any student or any teacher or any parent or anybody wants to make a complaint or make suggestions, we can, there is a group, a team of people that can read the suggestions and present a report on the parents and teacher conferences. Because I think that's why we should have this implementation. Not only to raise hands, but to listen and to hear and to know what exactly is happening in the schools. Because if we don't create a system, how do children, is going to look for somebody when it's our duty to implement at first? So if that, if fails, then we can say the students can complain about it. But right now, there is no system at all. So I'm asking you for your help. We don't know how to do it alone. And I trust you. I came to you to ask for help. As you suggested, find out to the student. You suggested to me as a mother. I want to help, but I want to know how we can do it together. Because we paying and giving a lot of money to people that is doing their jobs. And there's a lot of complaints from parents that there is security guards sitting and eating while they should be walking and watching what the children are doing. We have a security director that is not doing their job. So we want, we want that the money really be spent and somebody that can really help us. That's all, thank you.
I know how the microphone tastes if you're laughing. Hey man, you know, there was a rumor that they say I stepped, I stopped coming to council meetings because my wife and the lawyer works here. God is good, not that good.
Good to see you.
Yeah, so.
April fourth.
Yeah, it was an historical day, right?
It was. Sad day.
Sad day, right? Assassination of Martin Luther King, Memphis, Tennessee.
Yep.
What was even more, you know, what's even more sad about that day? Well, I'll say nineteen ninety-nine was even more sad than his tragic death was that his family, you know, the United States government assassinated him. Are you ready?
I don't know if assassinated. It was a jailbreak or whatever.
Employed by the United States government. His family was awarded a settlement stating that the United States government assassinated Martin Luther King. And guess what his family was allotted? Guess what the money was that his family recovered for his assassination? One hundred dollars. So the United States government assassinated Martin Luther King and paid his family one hundred dollars. See, you should let me ask the questions next time. So you fell for that, Charlie. You fell for that. You should let me ask them next time.
You're telling the story. I, you're five minutes, but I was aware of that.
Yeah, you know. I'm sure, I mean, it had a big celebration in January. They should have gave you that information.
It wasn't in my agenda.
So, yeah, so for the record, the United States government assassinated Martin Luther King and gave his family one hundred dollars. I want to, first of all, Captain Miller. And I reached out to you, I reached out to him a few months ago. I was waiting to get some information on September shootings and post-October shootings. He called me once, never got back to me. I wondered if he had that information now.
That's not true, so now we spoke on the phone and I gave you that information. I don't remember what it is offhand.
No, but I told you that information was accurate. You said you'd get back to me and you never got back to me.
You never said it was inaccurate. Maybe you asked me to break it down or I said I would see if I could do that. I did recall you again and you never returned my call.
You did not?
Your work is wonderful. But we spoke, did we speak on the phone? Did I give you information? You originally just said I never called back.
Say no more, say no more, alright.
You're lying from the beginning.
I went pretty on freestyles, right there. Okay. A young lady, you know, the people came up and they gave you heartfelt, you know, testimony about the issue that's going on in the New Brunswick school system. I was away, you know, I was on a mission. I was actually, you know, this situation, I know New Brunswick had an issue with water. So does Newark, you know, and I was actually putting a fundraiser together to go out to Flint, Michigan. It was a successful event. We went out to Flint. We took about twenty-five hundred cases awarded to Flint, Michigan. And we also took a thousand waters to the school system of Newark. So I was kind of tired. It wasn't like I was neglecting you guys. It's just that it was a busy event and I had to, you know, stay focused on that. But I was definitely coming back. But in the process of me dealing with the Flint situation, I seen a video clipping of the young man being assaulted in a high school. And it was, I mean, it was, it was very disturbing. And to actually see the lack of participation and breaking the issue up from the security guard was even more disturbing. My question to you is, is Pete Mangarella still in charge of the New Brunswick school security?
Yes.
Okay. But that's probably part of the issue. If you're not aware, I was not letting the people aware that Pete Mangarella, back in nineteen ninety, shot a young teenager in his back unarmed in Franklin Summers. So part of the problem is picking the guy that already shot a teenager to be head security. I would think that that's an issue in itself. You should have called me back. I wasn't even going to do that. But I think that that's an issue in itself. Would you think that the one, that one law enforcement officer that shot a teenager while he was on the ground in nineteen ninety, that's the guy that the city of New Brunswick picked to be head of the security of New Brunswick High School? What is that saying about the city of New Brunswick? Of course, there's going to be a lack of participation and a lack of empathy for the people that's going to this school. The leader of the security, the person in charge of the security is shooting teenagers. And please don't insult my intelligence by telling me that you guys weren't aware that Pete Mangarella shot Darryl Walker back in nineteen ninety.
I know of Mr. Mangarella being in a altercation or having that experience years ago, but he was, was he convicted of anything? Was he found guilty of anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
I mean, was there, was there hearing? I mean, what was thought was more just to the case than him just shooting somebody?
What, I mean, for what? Shooting someone is, you should know the specifics. You, this is the thing, you're saying.
I don't know the specifics of nineteen ninety.
You're saying you're aware of a situation that took back, that took place, that's taking place. And none of the guys know whether he was disciplined or not. But for you guys to be a city council and not be aware that he shot, you didn't know what it was. It could have been a stabbing. He could have been disciplined for misplaced in a bike, but it was a shooting. He shot a teenager while he was on the ground. That should be information that you should be aware of, that everybody here standing should be aware. Everybody in this room should be aware of that. He shot a teenager in nineteen ninety on the ground and now he's head security at New Brunswick High School. Yes. Yes. Call me back, I don't play. I'm back. I don't play, man.
Play on Friday.
Don't call me wrong now, Mr. Pittman. One, I just want to say, as far as the Juneteenth celebration, that's, I'm quite sure that Councilman Fleming has something to do with that.
That was a factory, oh, I can't take credit. I need to hold it.
Oh, alright.
I need to be there this year too. I need to be there.
I'll be there, I'll be there. But we did discuss. Oh, okay. Good job on that. I just want to end by saying this. After we came back from Flint, Michigan, it was amazing, it was a successful event. You know, we actually, the whole project was funded by just regular, everyday people. There was no celebrities, no elected officials. There were just regular, everyday people who put the trip together and we made it happen. And once I got back, you know, we decided, well, you know, there's only one place where, you know, black people are going to New Brunswick. And that's the Progressive Lives in the South of Tampa. And I decided, you know, I said, well, you know, everybody will meet up there and, you know, just have a celebration and be, you know, happy. We had T-shirts and things of that nature. And going, going into the Progressive Lives, I noticed that the New Brunswick Police Department, and it's like, I don't know if it's an attack on black people, but just how they swarm, it was incredible how they just swarm that area on Fridays and Saturdays. They just swarm the Health Street Progressive Lives. They pull out tickets, they, you know, any car is double parked, any, anybody coming in, they get a good look at them. If you're, if you're coming down the street, you know, I actually was pulling out. Officer down behind me rolled around for a little bit and then I don't know if he ran my place and eventually turned it off. But just the attack, you know, I mean, like, as if that's the only place that's actually people are. Like, it's like they have nowhere else. So, I mean, you're allowing anyone else to park their car legally, anyone else to commit whatever crime because you're so focused on this area. It's insane, like. I, you know, I can guarantee you that any given day I can record it and it'll be exactly how I stated because every time I go, it's like that. It's only on Fridays and Saturdays. And that's the main time that black people are there, Fridays and Saturdays. I want to know, like, is someone authorizing that? Is that, because it's definitely intentional. You know, I don't see anywhere else being governed like that to that magnitude. So I want to know who is behind that? If it's an intent to, is it to create revenue for the municipality? Or is it just, I guess, oppress and depress people? Because it's only, it's one or the other. I don't see it being any, you know, a benefit to the community by them, you know, circling corners like they're jaws and moving or something. I really want to know, is it to oppress people or is it to create revenue for the municipality?
I don't, I don't have an answer to that, Mr. Pittman. I don't think anybody's targeting anybody. I mean, does anybody have an answer or want to answer? Mr. Captain?
Mr. Pittman hasn't provided any date, so I don't know of a specific day.
This Saturday just passed. This Friday just passed.
I'm not going to log into keeping it running.
Go ahead, go ahead, Captain.
It's a police officer out there patrol. Mr. Pittman, as in his opening statement, we know he exaggerates the truth. So how many officers in cars are out there? It's hard to say. If he wants to give me a specific date and time, I will look into who was assigned out there that day. But the police are out there patrol. If there's a reason for them to be somewhere specifically, they're going to respond. If they're patrolling a neighborhood, they're going to patrol. Other people complain that the police aren't there enough. So, you know, it's a balancing act on how the police are out there.
Thank you, Captain.
How do I exaggerate the truth? In nineteen ninety-nine, I mentioned Martin Luther King. In nineteen ninety-nine, his family was awarded one hundred.
He was talking about the phone call between you and him. That's what he's talking about, not the Martin Luther King.
Oh, well, he's going to say I exaggerated something he can't prove, okay. But I would like for you to publicly, you know what I mean, recognize and also give an apology to these people who came up to speak to you. Because I don't believe that none of you guys knew that Pete Mangarella shot a teenager back in nineteen ninety. And I don't believe that you guys are, I know that you guys were aware of him being head of security. So I think you owe these people an apology. And it's not just the neglect from the regular security. It's not just neglect from the students. You guys, you stay on there. Don't let them get away because they're going to act like they don't know what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
But they hired, they hired a person that shot a teenager back in nineteen ninety. So you stay on there. You go to the Board of Education and you come to these council meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
Good evening, once again. Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. Can I get an answer to my question about Sergeant Quick?
Can you re-ask the question one more time, sir?
Yeah, has he been transferred or his assignment been changed?
Captain Miller?
We did discuss this at the last meeting. I'm not going to discuss personnel issues, particularly Mr. Cradville's about the anti-crime unit, which is a covert unit dealing with narcotics and vice-related crimes. A lot of their operations are undercover in nature and I'm not comfortable discussing it also. Or most of my duties. So it's not clear if Sergeant Quick
So, it's not clear if Sergeant Quick has, uh, been caught lying and there's issues about his credibility and, uh, maybe that's why he was transferred. Captain won't comment on that, won't, won't assure the public that that's not the case?
My answer is, I would say I'll let them discuss personnel issues.
Okay, so, so the police department will not confirm that Sergeant Quick was not removed from a post because of questions about his integrity, his credibility, his, uh, honesty.
That's not the question you asked, Mr. Cradville, you asked, was he transferred from the anti-crime unit? That was the question you asked, and how you put in words in people's mouth.
You, you, you just threw all these adjectives and all these other adverbs and things into your question. So the answer he gave is that's the answer he gave, so what else do you have, sir?
Okay, so he didn't answer the question. Um, and I think that, quite frankly, the, the, uh, concerns about Mr. Mangarella's track record, the concerns I'm raising about Sergeant Quick, the repeated incidents of people being assaulted or killed by the police prove that we need an open and transparent civilian review board. Civilian oversight is the only way, because obviously Internal Affairs is not doing their job and they're not being transparent about their job. They're saying, well, we, we don't have to tell you whether he was transferred because he's, uh, been, been caught lying. These are serious things and we need serious people to address these issues. And I guess that means civilians are gonna have to step up and do it. Uh, I wanna say that I stand with the family of, uh, Oscar Aparicio and the, um, the community that came out here tonight. I wanna say I'm especially proud of the community that came to the Board of Ed, Board of Education meetings and the brave people who spoke, uh, especially the young people who got up here and spoke. It takes real bravery and they deserve a round of applause for that. And I hope that the council will take this seriously, I hope the community will take this seriously and keep pushing for changes, because obviously the status quo is not good enough in our schools. We need to do better, the education system is one of the things that's holding our city back and holding our community back. Um, on the topic of announcements that, that should be said out loud at this meeting, I think everyone should be told that, uh, there is an election coming up, uh, April 19th, Tuesday, April 19th, and everyone who can should vote. Um, the, the democratic process here is already deeply flawed because most people run unopposed, um, and here's a chance to actually have an election where there's a contest, and New Brunswick Today's gonna do our best to cover, um, the candidates and the issues and inform people so they can make an informed decision on April 19th. And it's really in our hands now to make sure we vote. And I think that everyone, uh, should, should be aware of that and, uh, and make sure that they vote. Um, I, I also do wanna ask about, uh, the, the lead issue. I know that, um, the city is more focused on lead paint. Um, and I know that the city's also doing, uh, gonna try to do a new program to help, um, landlords fix lead problems at their properties. And I just wanted to, I mean, I learned about this yesterday for the first time, but I'd like to understand if there's any statistics on, um, how many properties in New Brunswick are affected by lead?
Do we have that answer, anybody, on how many properties are affected by lead? The money, Mr. Pittman?
As we were discussing with Mr. Cradville, uh, yesterday at our, our hearing, um, in cities that have a lot of older buildings, you will have a lot of instances of, of lead paint in those, those buildings. Um, so you, I can't give you a specific number on that, but New Brunswick has a relatively older housing stock. I explained to Mr. Cradville yesterday, um, lead paint was banned nationally in 1978. New Jersey itself banned lead paint, uh, a little bit earlier than that in, in 1971. So if you have a building older than that, very likely that there is some lead paint in that property. It may not be a problem if everything's maintained well and there's no dust coming off or, uh, paint chips. But if the property is not maintained particularly well, it can be a, a problem. Um, as I'm sure council members have seen, there was some, um, news reports a few, um, months ago about, um, several cities in New Jersey having, um, uh, lead hazard levels higher than, than Flint, Flinces with, uh, water, whereas the, the lead, um, hazard advocates were, uh, saying that New Jersey's issues are not, um, uh, water issues, but are more, uh, involved with, with lead paint. And it has to do because there are older cities here. And we are, uh, proposing to use some of our community's own block grant dollars this year to, uh, create a program to, um, abate lead in, uh, in houses that have it in rental properties and so forth. One of the reasons we're doing this because the, the state had not been funding this and so forth. And, uh, fortunately, you know, Governor Christie, uh, announced that he was gonna do that. I know Mr. Cradville was at his, uh, news conference, uh, yesterday, uh, about that. Um, so that'll be some additional funds that, uh, might potentially be available to, uh, remove lead from, uh, some of the, uh, the properties out there. We used to operate, uh, with state funds, a program to do that in, in rental properties, and I think it was probably in the neighborhood of, uh, 80 units or so that, uh, we were able to, to do lead, uh, abatement with. And we hope to be able to go back out and do, uh, do some more of that to make these houses safe, which, once you remove the lead from them, it's gone, uh, forever. Uh, so that it, it's a very long-term, uh, uh, solution with this. But just because a house may have older paint in it doesn't necessarily mean there's a lead paint hazard. But, um, in older cities like this, it's a, typically, it is a problem.
Okay, and I do wanna say I applaud the city for moving forward and trying to address the problem. Uh, what can people do today, though? If they think they might have a problem in their property, what can somebody do today?
Uh, one thing they can do is go to our website, because we have a webpage up there about, uh, lead paint and, uh, what the hazards are with it and some of the things that, uh, people can do. We have links on there to vote, uh, some information that's available from the state. And, uh, US EPA has a very good website where they have, uh, a lot of information about what homeowners or tenants can do in their house, uh, to, uh, make it lead safe, uh, if there, uh, if are contamination issues, the kinds of interim things that they should be able, should do to, uh, not, uh, uh, cause a hazard with, uh, the children or, or anyone for, uh, elevating their lead blood levels, washing their, their hands a lot, washing different, different surfaces and so forth. So there's a lot of information that, that is on our website and directs to, uh, other websites where there's additional information. That's one of the things that we're doing. Also, when people are coming in for, um, the rental registration, uh, when they're coming into our office, we're handing them a brochure about, uh, landlords and their responsibilities with lead paint. New Jersey, uh, has been a leading, uh, state with lead paint, uh, abatement and has, uh, laws in place about, for multifamily buildings maintaining, uh, lead safe conditions in those. So we are handing those out to people who come in to, to do their registrations.
Very good.
Thank you for the thorough answer. I wanted to, uh, bring up the issue of lead in the water. Um, I know it may not be as serious as lead paint, uh, in the homes, but it is most certainly a serious issue as we've learned over the past few months. Um, and I, I'd like to, to, uh, bring up a, a property in New Brunswick called Tove Manor. And there was a lawsuit in 2007 where, um, Ed O'Rourke, who's now since pleaded guilty to, uh, public corruption, uh, for lying about the quality of our water here. Uh, in that lawsuit, it was alleged that he, uh, basically, uh, flushed the pipes when the, uh, people that were suing were trying to get accurate samples, uh, to, to prove that there was lead in the water, and the samples did show that, um, but only after they did the test properly, uh, Mr. O'Rourke basically sabotaged the test. Is that true? Is there, uh, does anybody in the city know whether or not Mr. O'Rourke sabotaged a lead test?
I don't, I don't know that to be true. Anybody know that to be true? Yes, Mr. Cradville?
I was involved in litigation, I, I've never heard anything that would suggest what Mr. Cradville had discussed.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll provide you the paperwork where it was alleged, um, but it was Mr. O'Rourke.
He was alleged?
Well, the guy pleaded guilty to public corruption, so maybe we should look into these allegations that maybe he was, uh, up to the funny business sooner than we thought.
Fair enough.
And, and I hope that the city will investigate, I hope you'll give an update on this at your next meeting, whether or not I ask about it, because this is serious. Um, a lot of people live in Tove Manor, a lot of young people. And the, the last thing I wanna, uh, ask about is our schools. We have, uh, some school buildings that are more than a century old, uh, at least one. Lincoln School is now more than 100 years old. Um, and young people are most vulnerable to lead poisoning. The young and the old, like many, uh, um, you know, issues, it affects the most vulnerable the most. Does the New Brunswick school system do any testing at all of the water in the schools?
Anybody know that answer? Yes, Mr. Cradville?
Excuse me, I'm not a representative of the New Brunswick schools, but, um, shortly after the allegations that there were problems with lead in, uh, the Newark schools, the New Brunswick, I'm sorry, New Jersey Department of Education and New Jersey Department of Children and Families directed all schools, all childcare centers, all after-school programs, uh, et cetera, to discern whether there are lead issues in their, uh, water systems within those facilities. The New Brunswick schools have contracted with a company to do lead testing in the schools. I know no details about it, but.
Nothing, I can board that down that, Mr. Cradville?
But they are addressing the issue, but I don't have.
Thank you.
Off, then, just to make a point, those results need to be immediately shared with the public as soon as they're available. This is not the type of thing where we can allow another Ed O'Rourke situation to put people's health in danger. Whatever the results are, good or bad, they must be made public immediately. And I hope that the council agrees and will.
We'll have to go to the Board of Education, they're the ones that hired us, for the one to be able to get the results.
Okay, and perhaps the council's liaison to the Board of Education could, uh, if he agrees with me, pass this along, can you ask Mr. Fleming if he agrees that this information should be immediately made public?
Yes, he does.
So I hope that the school board will do that, and I hope you'll use your power to achieve that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Anybody else want to address the council's issue? Anybody else? Seeing nobody else? Thank you, sir. Don't walk, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yep.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Ega.
Yes.